I'm gonna turn off his video. And just have his name thing. Okay, Alan, we are happy to welcome you and hope you're well today.
Yep, good evening.
Needs to turn down their volume. I don't know who that is, okay? Um, I would like to invite Dan Winslow, who is a local humanist celebrant, to give our invocation today. Mr. Winslow. And you need to unmute yourself, please. There you go.
Is the audio working?
It is.
Oh, good, thank you. Good evening, board members, guests, and community. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before our board with tonight's invocation. I would like to take this time to emphasize the importance of critical thinking, which applies formal reasoning, logic, and skepticism to decision-making processes. It is critical thinking that offers the possibility of delivering us from the salesman's snake oil, from the misdirection of false motives, from our own sincerely held but possibly deficient beliefs, and from misfortunes which might occur if we think dogmatically. All in our community depend upon the merits of sound, critical thinking. We hope that Oxford boards will avoid making decisions where information is limited, ambiguous, contradictory, of uncertain economic impact. Often Oxford's diverse communities are equally affected. Relying upon critical thinking ensures that board members consider all aspects of arguments before the board. Insist that arguments are clearly stated. Give an authority's opinions due weight and nothing more. Avoid emotional responses. Recognize the need to evaluate preconceptions and ensure transparency in the board's actions. By these actions, the City of Oxford's Board of Commissioners, by a lot of reason tempered by empathy, will each of us emulate our board's use of reason tempered by empathy as we promote Oxford's happiness and prosperity. We must try. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Winslow. We appreciate you coming out tonight. And with that, we will move forward to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Kwan Bridges and our clerk or administrative assistant will, will put the flag up on your screen.
All right, well, everybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Oh, I think, okay, we're back. At this time, we consider adjustments to an approval of the agenda. We do not, to my knowledge, have any add-ons. However, there was a last-minute change to the items that are included in the consent agenda. Is there anything else that anybody is aware of that we need to be discussing tonight? Okay, and just to clarify, what our clerk sent out to us is that the agenda, the minutes that will be reviewed in the consent agenda are, do not include the February 26th board retreat, but rather the March 1st agenda meeting, the March 9th regular meeting, the March 11th recalled meeting to vote on the public hearing item, and the special call meeting on March 29th. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey, any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Can't do signal so by saying aye. I do that roll call, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Curran.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath. Uh, you're muted.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bridges.
Aye.
And just to reiterate, if I call out your name in a different order than when I did it before, it's because on my screen, everybody's images bounce around and the easiest way for me to do it is the order in which I see you on the screen. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those that board members should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner, I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. And if you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Any conflicts? Yes, sir, Commissioner Tovey.
I'm not sure whether it's a conflict or not, Madam Mayor, but Item G, consider approving the agreement for ACIM. I just want to make it clear, I am on the board of ACIM. So I don't want there to appear to be any, I don't think there is, but I just want people to know.
I appreciate you bringing that up, and to my understanding, there is no conflict. I think our attorney will reiterate that as a, you are a volunteer member of the board and do not stand to profit from such a vote, but I appreciate you bringing that up. Mr. Burnett, do you have anything to the contrary to say to that?
Ma'am, that's accurate. There is no conflict because he has no financial gain from this vote.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you very much, Commissioner Tovey. And so the record, let the record note Commissioner Tovey's comments and the resolution thereof. And with that, we move forward to Amy Ratliff, our city engineer, who will provide the board with an update on the status of the orphan landfill project and an update on all infrastructure products, projects that the city has committed to or are currently underway. And with that, Ms. Ratliff, please carry on, and thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a little while since we have talked about some of our projects and just want to go through a few of them briefly and let you know. And feel free to ask. I'm not sure where that feedback's coming from. Hopefully that will stop. The orphan landfill, as most folks will recall, is across from the Cookout and the Taco Bell off of Industry Drive where the old Dog Pound was and where we sell Christmas trees and produce at different times of the year they set up there. We went through the first few phases of looking at the landfill with our consultant, S and M E. They have provided a view of the waste that is actually located on the site, the type of debris, and what would be required to stop leachate and what is in the waste with regard to existing utilities. The sanitary sewer lines run through there because there was an old land wastewater treatment there as well. Identifying the creek so that they could, a buffer can be created for that stream that's in there. And one of the things that we have been working with the state on is they had implemented a number of new requirements for reimbursement of the funds that the city has expended. I met with the consultant last month. We are trying to work through those new reimbursement requirements. We think we have gotten a resolution to most of them and will proceed with reapplication, excuse me, reapplication of those reimbursement funds that we have outstanding to date. So hopefully we'll get those taken care of. Unfortunately, or fortunately, you know, in both cases, we are not one of the most hazardous dump sites out there. As such, with regard to cleanup, we are going to fall pretty low on the list that the state has for doing remediation on existing landfills that were improperly closed, such as this one. S and M E is working with another client, trying to gauge the state's willingness to do additional remediation or allow the city to do additional remediation on top of the typical closeout that the state provides funds for. Typically, they will come in and do the minimum amount required to make the site safe and to properly close it out. If the city chooses or a developer chooses to, you know, want to develop on that land in the future, removal of that waste would be required in order to use that as a buildable, developable area. So S and M E has been getting pushback from the state, even if, you know, the remediation efforts cost $5 million for the state to do the minimum amount and $10 million to excavate the waste and relocate it to a proper landfill. And the city is willing to pay the additional $5 million to do the extra cleanup and make it buildable. The state has not been buying into that process. And so, you know, hopefully with the other municipality trying to make inroads here, if we choose or a developer chooses to do that route in the future, maybe they will have laid some of the groundwork for us to do similar things. So that's where we stand pretty much with the landfill at the moment. As most of you are aware, we have a number of projects going on. The 2017 waterline project was completed by Park Construction. The 2017 sewer line replacement project is currently under construction with H.G. Reynolds. That project is currently in the vicinity of the Clarion Inn. You may have seen the equipment over on the Popeye's side of the road where they were doing a bore underneath Martin Luther King or NC 96 with that sewer line. They're progressing pretty well with that project. The USDA contract, one also with H.G. Reynolds, has reached substantial completion point. We are about to issue that for H.G. Reynolds. We did our final walkthroughs last week, and they are working on punch list items for that project. Hopefully, we'll close those remaining punch list items in about the next 30 days, and H.G. Reynolds and USDA can call that project complete. The 2018 sewer line replacement project, we just sent that advertisement for bid to the paper. We hope to bid that and have that on the June agenda for approval for construction to move forward. The 2018 waterline project is currently at the Division of Water Infrastructure for review. Both of these projects were delayed, if you recall, as we looked at the possibility and wanted to go forward with a median on College Street in order to add to the, excuse me, the appeal of Oxford as you enter from the College Street direction. And so that had a few delays in getting those projects out to bid. As soon as the Division of Water Infrastructure approves their portion of the waterline project, we will get that one out to bid. The 2017 B sewer line replacement project is also under construction. Moffett Pipe is working on that project, and they have been, they started in the vicinity of the hospital. They will be transferring down to do a dormant leg of the sanitary sewer that will be under the roundabout, which transitions us into some of the DOT projects. The DOT is anticipating starting the roundabout in May and moving forward with getting that in place prior to the resurfacing project. The resurfacing project is scheduled to go to bid in May with a let date in July with an 18-month timeframe for construction on that project. We're working with DOT on that to incorporate the bike lanes and restriping and modifications for Williamsboro Street and Main Street showing the bulbous and medians that are proposed for those areas in accordance with the downtown master plan. So we are hoping that DOT has gotten all of those items included. Once they advertise that project for bid, we'll give it a final review in order to ensure that they incorporated all the elements that we asked them to, including the bike lanes. This is the project, of course, that the city is piggybacking with our resurfacing project in addition to the work that DOT is doing on their roadways. And that is the majority of the projects in a very short timeframe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ratliff. Members of the board, does any, do any of you have any questions for Ms. Ratliff? Unmute yourself, Commissioner Tovey, please. You are still muted. There you go.
I just have one question for Amy or for Alan. You mentioned the roundabout. There's a sewer pipe underneath where the roundabout is going that has to be moved. Did you get the equipment to do that? I think Alan was, or Amy, were looking for a concrete box of some sort that goes in the ground, was that right? I don't know what it's called.
Amy can probably answer that question. We're still looking for an actual manhole replacement to replace the one that's in the center. I don't know if that has arrived yet or not. So Amy, do you have an answer to Commissioner Tovey's question?
We have contracted, we've requested Moffett Pipe to include that in their project ahead of the 2018 sewer line project. They will actually be extending 392 feet of ductile iron pipe that's hitting either side of the roundabout so that we will be well out of the way of the roundabout before they build it and in the future for maintenance purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Any other board members with questions for Ms. Ratliff? Okay, then I have two right now. One of them, can you please, you were going so nicely through saying the 2017 water, 2017 sewer, and so on. And on the, I missed, I was writing when you said the project that is being, and actually the project that Commissioner Tovey just mentioned, that Moffett Pipe is working on. What's the, which one is, is that? I mean, I know where it's going, but what's the name of that in terms of all the other ones that you named?
That is the 2017 B sewer pipe, sewer replacement project. And I apologize, I've neglected to mention that the wastewater treatment plant project has also gotten started with CDM Smith. And we are working to gather data to provide to them to move forward on the design of that project. We have had a kickoff meeting and actually have a second meeting this week on Thursday to continue providing them data and making sure that we are all on the same sheet of music as we move forward with the design of that.
Excellent, thank you. And, and going back to the orphan landfill, so am I, did I understand correctly that it would take $15 million to actually clean that spot up in order for somebody to build there?
They do not have an exact number for what it will take to clean that up. We, you know, can look at that. It depends on what type of work is done, how the state chooses to close that out. And so part of that will be working with the state to determine a method for closure and whether that is something that, you know, we want to add to, you know, say the cost is $10 million, but if it was $15 million to actually make it a buildable piece of property, would the state allow the city or a developer to pay the difference? But we don't have a cost at this time for that remediation work.
Okay, so those were just example numbers. Got it. Okay, thank you. And did you give us an amount? You said that, that we are working on a reapplication for reimbursement for money that we've put in because the guideline shifted. Do, did you give us a total amount of what the city has invested that, that we're hoping to be reimbursed for? And I apologize if you didn't, I missed it.
It's approximately $130,000. We admitted that, and as I said, they decided that new rules and requirements applied to us even though the work was done previously, so.
Okay, excellent. Thank, I just was hearing parts and I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed any of it. Thank you very much. Anybody else, anything more from Ms. Ratliff? Okay, with that, we will go forward to the public comment period where members of the community may speak on agenda as well as non-agenda items. Ms. Bowen, do we have anybody that signed up for public comment tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we will proceed to Item 3A, which is the public hearing. And we are here to have a public hearing to receive citizen input on the request from Eddie Cottle for a non-contiguous annexation consisting of 4.25 acres located on Lewis Street next to the Walmart Shopping Center. And I am going to read the description for the record. "The property, which was recently rezoned to be to highway business, will be served by city water and sewer. The property meets all the standards for non-contiguous annexation. The five standards for a non-contiguous annexation are: one, the part of the annexation area is within three miles of the city's corporate limits; two, that no point in the annexation area is closer to another city's primary corporate limits than the annexing city; three, the annexing city must provide the same services to the annexation area that it provides to areas within its primary corporate limits; four, that the entire 4.25 acre parcel is annexed; and five, that the total area of the city's satellite doesn't exceed 10% of the area within its primary corporate limits." And those are all met. With that, I declare the public hearing open. And would invite anybody that is present now in the audience to unmute yourself to speak on this issue if you so desire. Okay, I am not seeing anybody raising their hand or muting themselves. Is there another call? Is there anyone that would like to unmute themselves to speak on this issue? Okay, hearing no voices and seeing no gesticulating, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed for now. But as you know, when we have a public hearing, we are required to wait to vote on the item for at least 24 hours. And during that time, if anybody comes forward to the clerk or a member of the board to make a comment on this item, we need to take that comment and voice it when we next meet to do our vote. And so, members of the board, I'm gonna reach down and get my calendar. Are people prepared to determine a time now when we reconvene after tonight's meeting and no sooner than 7:27 tomorrow night to hold our vote? Any, any suggestions?
Thursday morning. Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, and what time? So I heard that from Commissioner Tovey. Commissioner Fields, what time did you say?
Eight o'clock. Is that good with you, Commissioner Bridges?
8 a.m.
Do you want to make it a little bit later, Commissioner Bridges? To give our board, our staff, time to get to the office?
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, early is 8:30.
8:30 would be fine.
Yeah, and it has more to do with me getting my granddaughter to school. I mean, I'm up at six, so I mean, it's not too early. It's just that I'm trying to.
You got a window of opportunity. You gotta deliver your granddaughter. Do you need to make it at quarter of nine, or is 8:30 good?
No, 8:30 will be fine. I mean, if that's okay with everybody else.
Mayor Protem, does that time work for Mayor Protem?
I'm gonna try to be there, you know, either way, it's gonna be tough for me, so.
Sure will.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Absolutely. Okay, is there any other commentary on the time that anybody would like to put forth right now? And Mayor Protem, we are happy to have you holding your phone and zooming in if you're on the road or something.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So with that, are we all good for reconvening at 8:30 a.m. Thursday morning? Raise your hand. I'm, I'm seeing lots of hands, and the city manager already did a thumbs up because he didn't have to come in and ask staff to come in earlier than 8:30 so that, or too much earlier. I know we have to set the zoom up. Thank you very much. So, for the public, and we'll let people know, and you know, Ms. Bowen, we haven't really talked about this in the past, but I guess there's probably value in sending it out that the board will be doing this vote on Thursday morning. And if anybody has a comment, they have until then to get their comments in. And with that, we will move forward to Item 4, City Business. For A, to consider final improvement of a one-lot subdivision consisting of 4.25 acres located on Lewis Street next to the Walmart Shopping Center. "The property, which was recently rezoned to be to highway business, will be served by city water and sewer. The property meets the subdivision standards. This one-lot subdivision will be served by city water and sewer. Access to the property will be served by the access road. The proposed use will be a used auto sales center." And you have Attachment 4A, which has a map in it. And in the map, it's still showing that it's zoned RA, but we've already clarified that it has been rezoned to be to. And the recommended action is that staff recommends approval of the one-lot subdivision consisting of 4.25 acres. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, that was a concomitant motion, I think, between Commissioners Bullock and Tovey. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being no discussion, I will do a roll call vote. Mayor Protem, what say you? Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Tovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Curran.
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Bridges.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 4B, "Consider calling for a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance to be held at the May 11th regular board meeting. The main objective in developing this document was to bring in more modern development and to make it easier for staff and developers to interpret the document. The UDO Committee has been working on this document for the past 24 months. It will include conditional zoning districts, which will allow more flexibility for elected officials in approving standards for applicants." In Attachment 4B, you have the, the new zoning map. And as you know, Planning Director Hart emailed out the latest draft of the ordinance to the board for review. Staff and Planning Board recommend. Staff and planning board recommend calling for a public hearing for the May 11th regular board meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toby, close second by Commissioner Fields. Any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, I have a question for Planning Director Hart in a moment, but I'll take the vote. And starting with Mayor Protem.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
Yeah.
Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
Commissioner Curran?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously. And Ms. Hart, I recall seeing an email, but I did not get to spend much time on it from former planning board attorney Lori Dutra, who had some further questions about the map. And I was wondering whether or not they have been answered or addressed in the map. And you are on mute.
We were making those changes as of today, and certainly we'll be getting those back to her.
Okay, excellent. So, and then you would send out a new draft of the map if it includes any changes?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I would just only ask that maybe if whatever goes in the agenda packet, maybe it be turned sideways in the landscape format? Because it's so little, it's a little bit hard to see any distinguishing features in it this way, just for the members of our board, please, if that's possible. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Hart? Okay, item C, we consider approving the presented banner designs for attachment to Duke Energy polls, and we have with us tonight Rosalyn Green, who is representing the DOE D.C., and will be presenting on this item. And Ms. Green, we welcome you to our board meeting tonight. Thank you for taking time to come out and speak to us. And, oh, I guess, you know, I'll let you carry on, and I won't read the narrative unless there's something in there you don't hit, but thank you very much, and take it away.
Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, and I am pleased to be here to present the Downtown Oxford Economic Committee, and I made a request for banners. We would like the city council to review... Can you hear me?
We're having a lot of feedback right now. Let's see, you know, I can mute my... Well, I'll mute and see if that helps, so we can hear you without feedback. Okay, Ms. Green?
Okay, I'll start again. I represent the Downtown Oxford Economic Committee, the Design Committee, that put together the proposal that you have in front of you about approving the banners for the city of Oxford, for the streets of Oxford. And it's gonna be on the poles of Duke Energy, and I don't want to go through all of it, but you know what banners can do for a city. And this was part of the Main Street improvement that was, I think we started back in 2015 when we visited West Jefferson and Statesville to look at how they managed to develop their downtown area. But banners can really foster community pride. I think it brings vibrance and excitement and cheerfulness to the city streets. So I really hope that you would consider approving what we have put together. We did do a poll, a survey, and what you have is the top designs that everyone voted on, and it comes in two different mediums. The Downtown Oxford one, that would be for Downtown Oxford, has shop, dine, and explore, which I think you have in front of you. And then we have also the street one, which has historic, walkable, and friendly, and welcome to Oxford, that would grace the streets of Downtown Oxford. So we're hoping that you all have, I'm gonna ask if you have any questions, but we're gonna eventually have at least 85, 65 banners. So Oxford should be really sparkling and cheerful, and just help increase the appeal for people walking and driving, and just create new energy and excitement with the banners. So I'm just gonna see if you have any questions, because I know that you did receive all of the work that we have put together, and a sheet that it talks about the benefits of banners and how much it will cost. And just for those listening, the cost for the total banners, the 40 banners right now would be about $5,000, and that will come from the Downtown Oxford Economic Budget. Yes, Kwan?
Yeah, my question, are we gonna use both banners and just use them in different locations?
Yes. There will be banners coming down Monmouth to King Street, and then Downtown Oxford, so yes. And they'll be reusable, so we can use them year after year, so the money will be well spent.
Got a follow-up question.
Sure.
You know, I noticed on the one that says shop, dine, and explore?
Yes.
Now, you know, just from a visual standpoint, I noticed for the word shop, you've got a shopping bag. For the word dine, you've got spoon, fork, and knife. But for explore, there's no symbol. And I mean, and, you know, I'm no designer, but it's interesting that we have symbols for two of the words, but not the last one.
We can take, if that's what, we can always go back to the drawing board and look at that from our graphic designer.
Okay, I mean, like, I don't know, some binoculars or something, under the word explore, you know, like, you know, I was just, you know, just for consistency, you know, you got symbols for two of the words, but not for that third word.
Well, and that was meant to represent explore our museums, and because we have the pedestrian signage that is on the streets, many of the downtown corners, that's what the explore was supposed to represent. But we can certainly, it's gonna reduce the size of the graphics of the others. And remember, when you're looking at these from the street, those graphics have to kind of jump out and be the exact same. And the group sort of felt like the pedestrian signs that we have would cover that explore.
No, I'm good, I'm good, you know?
Mary, Ms. Green, I was just curious, why are we having two signs if we're concerned about branding and making our city stand out and sending a consistent message? Why do we have two different, two very different banners?
Well, as a matter of fact, even more, but basically, the welcome to Oxford will be like down at 85, so when we have tourist tourism, and they'll be welcoming into Oxford. And, but once you get downtown, we just felt that it should be a different banner. Because we looked at several options, really, when we did the survey for a variety of banners with a variety of symbols, you know, even like the hot sauce festival, and just different things for different people, because everybody's interested in different aspects of their lives, you know? So we looked at a lot of things, even like antique cars, horses, and, you know, things that represent sports. So eventually, you know, we may do quite a few of those, because we don't have to just determine, just to have one banner. I feel that, at least that's my feeling.
So in some of the discussion, Commissioner Gilreath was that the welcome to Oxford, this is our sort of logo and brand at this moment in time. That is what's on our cars, that's what we have currently. And the committee wanted to move forward to bring this piece of the downtown master plan into play. And the two different banners, if you look, the backgrounds are the same, the coloring is the same, so they complement one another. And that is what a lot of communities use to designate different blocks, if you will, that they have designated. We are using the two complementary banners to bring people in off of 85, and then to show what represents downtown and what you can do downtown. So that's the reason for the two. They are meant to work together and be complementary of each other.
On the, on the welcome to Oxford flag, when it says historical, walkable, and friendly, what's historic, you know, what would tell a person, what would be on the flag to indicate what's historical about Oxford?
Well, it's obviously the buildings with our courthouse and Cradle School and the actual court, the city hall. Unless you're from here, you're probably not gonna know and recognize those particular buildings, but that is, that is the part of the streetscape that we could fit onto the banner without it being so reduced in size that, that you, it wouldn't even be recognizable. And this is what the graphic designer took from the streetscape to make it presentable on a banner.
And that's what's being currently used in Oxford on your transportation vehicles and every, and all your other symbols, is that streetscape. And we had talked about other silhouettes of other historic buildings in Oxford, but we was decided to go with what's already been used.
I think these, oh, I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Fields?
Yeah, all the flags, if approved, all the flags will be of this, this, these two designs, or so many at this time, and Rosalyn, I think you said, you know, maybe later something could be added on or taken away, or?
Yes, we will have seasonal banners, so that, and that's still in the planning, what we got on the seasonal banners, like maybe for Christmas and different holidays, or, you know, during the hot summer. So it all depends, so depending on the funding, and, but we just want to get this started, because it's been on the master street plan for so long, we're just going and get this started since, and work with Duke Energy.
And this would, this would be a phase one. We do anticipate there'll be other phases where we use other banners. Once we identify, do we want to go with, because of the pepper, do we want to have one design specific for Oxford? And then do you want to do seasonal banners, or do we want to do something more centric to Oxford? So we will have those discussions once we get ready to start a...
Okay, thank you, thank both of you.
I think I would, oh, Commissioner Toby, and then I have a comment before we go on.
And I as well, please.
All right, just, just a question for Ms. Green and Ms. Yount. When the banners are up, say, down Martin Luther King, will it, will it have one banner on one pole? The next banner, the next pole would be a different banner, then you go back, like, alternative?
No.
No?
It'll be all, on Monmouth to King, it'll be all welcome to Oxford, and then downtown would be the down, down.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Protem Harris?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Green and Ms. Yount, for your work on this. I can remember years ago when we had banners previously, businesses had their names on them. I'm not sure if that's something you are considered, you know, I'm not trying to change anything, but maybe that, and they, I think you purchased them, because I remember my parents purchased one. So if that's an idea, you know, you could advertise your business on it, so, just for thought.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem, I can actually speak to that, because I remember those as well, and everybody was pretty excited by them. And then they had to be taken down, and the reason they had to be taken down is because NCDOT will not allow advertising for, in their right-of-way. So it's a great idea, and I think it was very popular, and, and I think everybody was disappointed when they had to come down, but it was because NCDOT wouldn't allow it with the businesses' names.
Okay.
And that's, and you're right, and that's how the businesses were very affordably able to beautify and support the effort, was by purchasing the banners, so, but, we're...
Okay, so, yeah, maybe, maybe you ought to check into that and see if it's, maybe it's changed, you know, because that's been a good 15 years ago, 20 maybe.
Do you have a copy, a picture? Of what it looked like?
I can ask, but, like, I don't remember.
Oh.
But I know that it was, each business had a name down at the bottom of it, you know? Welcome to Oxford, then it'll have the name at the bottom.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
And it was only a limited supply, I mean, only, not a limited supply, but it was so few and far between, everybody wanted one, so it was like a, I don't wanna say a competition, but it was a, everybody wanted to get, get one. And then you, we paid for it, though, it was, it's not free, you know, you paid for it, so, that could offset some costs, you know, if it's allowed.
We will look into that.
And I think when they took them down, they gave them back to the people.
They did. Now that she says that, I remember that now. I'm not as young as I used to be either, so.
You're still younger than we are, you will always be younger than we are, Mayor Protem. So with that, I have two, one, one comment and then a question. And the comment is, given that number of questions that have been raised about the design, I, I too want to thank you, Ms. Green, and Ms. Yount, and everybody who has worked on this process. I think the banners look great, and I think that they will, just as you say, Ms. Green, do a lot for perking up the appearance of the downtown and the Martin Luther King entryway, and I think people will be really happy to see them. I, I do want to point out, though, that I think some of the discussion we're having, the reason for that is that, that this is distinct from the original strategic goal that we had, which was in the strategic plan, was to launch a community-wide branding effort. So this is, this is a branding effort, but, but when you do the full-blown community-wide process, that's when you pull everybody together from throughout the community to look at the assets, the challenges, the opportunities, and the vision that we have for Oxford, and what we want to present to the community, and then we look at defining what the logo and the tagline would be. So I, I would hope that what we have here is a really great job to, as an interim, but that, but that we not put aside the original intent of, of a full-blown process that pulls in the rest of the community to, to determine what our look for the next 10 to 15 years might be. So that was just a comment that I want to make, but I think these, I think they look great. I think Ms. Yount's comment about the color scheme and how the two go play off one another, I, I think they're gonna be really, I think they're gonna look great. I did want to ask, because on one of your pages, in your attachments, we do have the price list, as you mentioned, Ms. Green, and, and in it is included a request that the city purchase 25 banners for a cost of $3,125. Is the vote tonight to include allocating the... Is the vote tonight to include allocating the funds to make that purchase or are we only approving the banner design and that additional funding would be voted on a separate time?
That funding, that funding is already included in the economic development budget and it was part of my budget when it was submitted. So once that budget was approved back in July, these funds have been pre-approved.
Okay.
What we need is just a uh, approval of the design so that the banners can be actually purchased.
Okay.
And I can request the funding from PDA.
Great.
Okay.
Excellent. So with that, are there any further comments from anybody on the board? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the design of the two banners.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Curran, any further discussion? Okay, well then with that, I will, let me go back and write my little tick marks in the right location. Um, I will start with Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh.
Okay, Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously. And Ms. Green, I wanna thank you again on behalf of everybody. I know we appreciated your joining us tonight to make your presentation and for your work on the DOE DC along with the other committee members and Ms. Yount to make this happen.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we will go forward to item four C, no, D, excuse me. Consider adopting a resolution supporting the fair, federal fair housing laws and public awareness recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. The city adopted a plan of quarterly activities to affirmatively further fair housing throughout the life of the CDBG revitalization grant. As part of the state's requirements for the Oxford Revitalization Community Development Block Grant Project, the city adopted a set of policies and procedures in twenty nineteen to adhere to state and federal guidelines for grant recipients. One of those positive policies was a fair housing plan. The only action required of the city is to refer anyone with a complaint to the North Carolina Human Relations Commission in Raleigh if a claim, a complaint is made regarding fair housing. The city's fair housing responsibilities apply only to the project and you have support information in attachment D. Recommended action is that staff recommends adopting the resolution and as you know, we discussed that the grant requires that the referral be made to the state level um, Human Relations Commission rather than the local county level. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges, any discussion there too?
Question.
Yes, says that Commissioner Gilreath, yes ma'am.
I was just curious, in one of our previous meetings, we talked about the posting of, of the fair housing um, laws for the public to be aware of and the comments were that they were gonna be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. And how do, how did we finally resolve that seeing that City Hall is not open to most of us?
Um, Ms. Hart, do you, would you like to comment on that? And I think you are muted.
Yeah, so, you know, we hope to promote fair housing and let the citizens be aware of all the fair housing policies through advertisement as well as still posting in, at City Hall.
Well, my question was, has it been done and where was it done?
Well, we have posted one and I have, in fact, I went by and checked the board and it wasn't taken down, so it is a poster of fair housing giving citizens information on where to have a, a complaint sent.
Where? City Hall?
It's in our informational board.
In City Hall?
It is.
Wow. But, no, so are we going to continue to use the outside ticket window, for lack of a better term, for people to come pay their water bills or wha, what is the plan? Looks like I am breaking up. What is the plan for opening up City Hall?
I'm sorry, but I can't answer that question, but as I stated before, we are planning to do advertisement in the local paper regarding fair housing.
Right, and I guess I was thinking, I apologize, Ms. Hart, I was thinking maybe the manager could hop in and make a comment about whether or not we're, because it's the, the traffic for the water bills is the most likely traffic past that board. What is your plan, Mr. Thornton? Do you plan on continuing to use the outside window for people or are you gonna go back into the finance office and if the latter, when do we think that's going to happen?
Well, personally, I'd like to see us get above thirty percent adult vaccination rates in North Carolina before I start letting people back into the building that I have no idea whether they've been vaccinated or not at this point in time. Um, I think uh, i- if the concern is of people coming into the building in order to see a fair housing poster, that we can certainly do better than that by posting it in other areas that people will see, uh, be it social media or our Facebook page, webpage, what have you. Uh, I think we can certainly make reference to that in the advertisement being placed in the newspaper, that the fair housing policy is available to be viewed on our website or something along those lines instead of directing people into the lobby of City Hall.
And, and the, my purpose for, thank you, and my purpose for asking was not to direct them into City Hall, but maybe we could just take that, particularly as long as we're using the outside window, could we not post that poster at the edge of the window so it's just there for anybody who comes to pay their bill?
I certainly don't see why we could not.
Okay. Would Commissioner Gilreath, would the combination of putting the poster out at the, the payment window and what, and using more uh, social media postings and so on that Mr. Thornton answered, does that answer your question?
Well, 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 it does and, and I honestly thought that had already been done, I just hadn't seen it. I was just assuming, maybe I just hadn't seen it is what I really thought, but yeah, I mean, that would, that would be fine. I mean, notices is what is required here and so notice must be given.
And could I do a follow-up to Commissioner Gilreath's question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any um, um, problem with putting a poster, for example, at the post office or at the courthouse? I mean, you know, I, I see a lot of folks, well, you know, a lot of folks come into courthouse, but, and they have a board there in the courthouse. And of course, when I'm going to mail things, I meet, I run into a lot of people at the post office.
Yeah. Are those, are those reasonable, Ms. Hart and Mr. Thornton?
May already be one at the post office, we did post one earlier.
Excellent.
We can certainly check on that and see if the Oxford Postmaster will allow that as well as the uh, checking with the clerk of courts office, see if they'll grant us that opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. So Commissioner Bridges and Commissioner Gilreath, is that, are, are you good or do you have any further comments or questions?
It's good for me.
Okay, Ms. Commissioner Gilreath, you're straight?
Uh, I think so. Yeah.
I think information on social media, media would be the most direct method right now because of COVID in, in, in directing our citizens to where this information is posted.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, with that, any further comments or are we ready to call the question? Okay, uh, we had a motion by Commissioner Bridges, all in favor, am I breaking up? It looks like my, okay, it looks like I'm good now. Um, I'm calling the vote, Mayor Pro Tem, what say you?
Hi.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Yes.
Commissioner Curran.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Yes.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Hi.
Okay, that motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. I, the, item four E, consider adopting a capital project ordinance for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. The city was awarded six million sixty-two thousand by the Division of Water Infrastructure. I, looks like I'm breaking up, I'm gonna stop my video, I apologize. Hang on. Hmm, boop. Uh, was awarded six million sixty-two thousand by the Division of Water Infrastructure for the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. This project is anticipated to take three to four years to complete and must have a capital project ordinance to meet state requirements for multi-year projects. You have support information in your attachment for E. The recommended action is that staff recommends the board adopt a capital project ordinance in order to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant uh, rehabilitation project over multiple years. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion for the ordinance.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion other than I know we all appreciate the work of our city engineer and um, others who were able to get this money for the city uh, in this project. Uh, starting with Mayor Pro Tem, what say you?
Uh.
Commissioner Bullock.
Yes.
Commissioner Toby.
Hi.
Commissioner Curran.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Uh.
Commissioner Fields.
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges.
Hi.
That motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, each of you. Item F, four F, consider officially engaging with Freez and Nichols Consulting Engineers to perform a feasibility study on how to remedy current stormwater issues at Elmwood Cemetery. The study will provide recommendations for the board to consider and will cost twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars, paid for with stormwater funds. No budget amendment is required to fund this project. The city of Oxford's Elmwood Cemetery has, has experienced a significant issue with stormwater drainage line that runs through the middle of the cemetery. Due to the sensitive nature of the situation, a feasibility study is recommended to be conducted to identify alternative solutions, provide high-level cost estimates for those alternative solutions, um, and to best understand how to minimize impact to surrounding internment sites. Recommended action is that the staff of the city of Oxford recommends that the Board of Commissioners officially engage with Freez and Nichols Consulting Engineers to perform this feasibility study and provide recommendations to the board for consideration. And should you have any questions, we have uh, representatives from Freez, Freez and Nichols here with us tonight who would be able to answer any questions that you might have. And of course, we have our city manager and engineer as well. Um, what is the pleasure of the board?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How, how long would this study take? Um, and, and I'm thinking of the damage that could be done in the meanwhile, that's all I ask, how long would it take?
The uh, contractor agreement calls for it to be completed within sixty days.
Okay, thank you.
Third question.
Yes, sir.
It might, probably, probably dumb question, but I wrote down today and looked at this and there's an area and it's, there comes and it designated between two of these little roads where it is caved in. And it looks like where the drain comes out, water runs out of it now, it's probably three, three and a half feet deep. Why wouldn't you just dig up the drain there and replace it?
Exactly.
And I'll take a stab at that and uh, Charles, you can fill in after me. Um, I would assume that that may be, well, one of the potential options that Freez and Nichols is going to be looking at in their review of this um, study that they're going to undertake out there in that area. Um, that may well be the recommendation. I think it's, you know, a lot of it is going to depend upon the uh, condition of the existing infrastructure and the proximity to the grave sites and uh, with some potential damage to be done to those uh, grave sites.
Well, I, I'm just, what I've always heard, I think your graves are six feet under, I always heard that, may not be true. And the drain that I saw coming out was about three and a half feet, so that's two and a half feet above the, the grave or the, the, the vaults or caskets, whatever. Um, and I know we drive around there with the um, backhoe, the excavator, and we cross graves, cause we go all in there to dig other graves. So we would lay plywood down on top of that so as not to damage um, the, the graves on either side of where you were, you were digging. Um, and from the, from where that leak of where it starts, to go follow that road, uh, you'd be, I don't know, guess, I don't know, fifteen feet in the ground at some point cause it goes uphill. So that, that almost seems not feasible. Um, to me, I mean, if you hired a bunch of people with a shovel and a, and a grubbing hoe, you could dig it up and um, put pipe back in there. I mean, it was, it came up about, didn't know what kind of pipe, it could be terracotta. Well, I don't know what difference it makes what's in there, it's what's gotta be replaced. Whatever's there is caved in and needs replacing.
And, and, and that's sort of what I was getting at when I asked the question at the last meeting regarding the amount that it's gonna cost us to assess what we're gonna do with it and, and, and then better understanding what is already under there. I'm like Danny, well, this is a lot of money just to figure out what we're gonna do versus just doing it. And I understand the sensitivity of all of it, but, but he's absolutely right. I went out and I looked at it too and, you know, we're not engineers or structural engineers of, or any sort, but that seems like a lot of money for the city to expend. I don't care whether, where it comes from, stormwater or cemetery or wherever, it seems like an excessive amount of money to fix a very common problem that we're having throughout the city.
Uh, any comments either from Mr. Archer or Mr. Thornton?
Uh, good evening, this is Charles Archer with Freez and Nichols, uh, thank you all for allowing us to join you. Yeah, and, and I understand the, the question and that perspective completely. Um, and it, it appears to be terracotta or clay pipe that, that's in the ground in, in part of the area. I think there's, there's more than just that one issue of you've got collapsing clay pipe. There appears to be concrete pipe on the lower end of it as well that has either collapsed somewhere itself or stopped up, cause when you go down to the creek, water is not running out of the pipe, it's running out from under the pipe. Um, and so, and with the sensitivity, we have some experience of working uh, in repairing cemeteries that have been damaged, uh, particularly by, by hurricanes. in repairing cemeteries that have been damaged particularly by hurricanes in recent years. It is sensitive in nature, and we typically use ground penetrating radar to determine where the grave sites actually are, what's in the ground, what it might be, and what depth it might be to make sure that when you get, when you are making the repairs, whatever the final plan may be, that you know what to expect because part of it requires having the proper people, if you do encounter something associated with the grave on site to deal with that in a proper way during construction. The comment about possibly going down Penn Avenue, I agree. That's that would be a more expensive solution, and it is going uphill for quite a bit of it to can get probably the first 20% of it or so. And we don't even know if that'll work from a grave perspective. But this, we wanted to explore that alternative, at least suggest it for the, for the city to explore or consider because that would get the storm drainage pipe out out from running adjacent to the graves, but that may not be a critical issue. Whatever the solution ends up being, hopefully it's something that will be a long-term solution that you don't have to deal with, or the city won't have to deal with for decades to come.
Any further comments from any members of the board?
I went over and had a look, and I noticed that, that, that land that's behind it, behind the cemetery, across the little branch or creek or whatever you call it. I saw water standing also over there. Is there a correlation between that and what's happening at the cemetery? Do you think it? You don't think, I see you shaking your head, no, Alan, so?
No, that's just part of the stream in the low-lying stream buffer area down there. There's a natural stream that runs through there that this storm line actually drains into, and that's just naturally occurring during wet periods, especially if you have a heavy rain like you did Saturday night, I believe, then it'll, it'll do just that.
Okay.
Does that stream, because I've seen this in elsewhere where we have stormwater flowing into a low-lying stream, but then the stream has no evacuation point because of development, so the evacuate, the natural evacuation for the stream has been built out, built away. Is that an issue with that stream down there? Is that one of the reasons Commissioner Fields might have seen standing water? Is there's no natural evacuation point for that water to continue to flow?
No, I don't believe so. It flows quite well through there during downpours. It's the situation of the actual lay of the land, the topography, that, that's a very, very low area. As a matter of fact, if you look closely over there, you'll see that there are, the city has a wastewater collection line there. There are elevated manholes there as well, and they're elevated for a reason, and that's because it is such a low-lying area. It is the lowest area following gravity. It is just naturally occurring, but the stream flows pretty darn well, if you ask me, from what I've seen, having been over there numerous times.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can get, maybe we can get on one accord if we all went at the same time and looked at the same stuff and someone explained it to us. I mean, maybe we should have asked for a group visit out there.
That is certainly reasonable. Do, are there other members of the board? Did that feel like they need to go back to see this before we vote on this item? Or what, again, is the interest of the board?
Mayor Pro Tem has his hand up.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. I apologize, Mayor Pro Tem. I did not, I am not very good at looking down below. I mean, I only see you when your box turns yellow. I apologize.
No problem, no problem. I just wanted to ask the question was, well, the question I have is, is this study going to do the entire cemetery or just that particular section that we have a problem? Because if we're having, because if we're having a problem in that section, more than likely later, it's gonna be another one. You know, I'm just trying to be cost-effective, you know? And I have nothing against cemetery in this aspect because that's how I make my money and my living. So I want to do what's right by the people that are there, but we also have to be mindful of how much money we're gonna spend because if we do a study, how, would it be feasible to do the entire section? I mean, the entire cemetery rather than just that section? Because, you know, just, that's just a question.
All right, I'll answer that one unless Amy can correct me. Otherwise, that is the only stormwater collection infrastructure that exists running through Elmwood Cemetery. Amy, feel free to correct me if I am wrong.
I was just pulling up the map as we were speaking, and you are correct. That is the only stormwater that is in the cemetery. There is the sanitary sewer that was mentioned, and there is a water line that goes to the small building on site that I have heard has actually been turned off at this point, but would still need to be taken into consideration.
So how deep are those pipes, Ms. Ratliff? Can you see that by the map?
One moment, please.
Because that'll answer Commissioner Curran's question.
Yeah. So, so why not just close off or disable that portion of it and reroute the stormwater?
I think that's part of the discussion. That's part of the analysis that Freez and Nichols would do. And Amy, while you're looking up what you were looking for, Mayor Pro Tem, I think you were in sync with Commissioner Gilreath because she requested last week at the agenda meeting, I believe, a map of the entire cemetery showing all the lines. And, and we received that in our agenda packet, which, and it shows the entire cemetery with a periphery outlined and water and sewer lines outside it, and it shows that one pipe running through, but I do not see, Amy, I did not see any other lines that you mentioned.
No, ma'am. The advantage of GIS is we have a map at our fingertips. The disadvantage is that it's only as good as the data that was put in, and so that water line is not something that is shown on there. That remember it, though.
Okay. Okay. Let me, let me just, Commissioner Gilreath, let me just make sure that Mayor Pro Tem has finished his questions, and then we'll go back to you. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have further questions on this?
That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilreath?
See, I'm having to use this magnifying glass to read this map, and I was curious that I didn't quite see nor understand what we're really talking about because it's not on the map. So we need more information.
The stormwater gravity main is on the map, but it's super light yellow. So if you, if you look kind of midway on the map, on the left-hand side, right outside the blue border, you'll see that there's a little, there's a little red line, and then it connects to a yellow line that runs through the cemetery, and that is the stormwater gravity main.
What, what street are we talking about?
Harris. If you look.
Okay, well, I'm looking there, and I'm, okay.
If you look just to the right of where it says Harris Street, you see a red line.
Right.
It crosses a blue line, then there's a faint yellow line that goes right the way across the cemetery to the next blue line.
Would you like me to pull it up on the screen?
That would be great. Amy, Ms. Ratliff, thank you.
Okay, you should have on your screen the map of the cemetery. Has that showed up yet for anyone?
Yes.
It is.
Okay, the storm sewer, you can see my hand here is the line going across the cemetery. That is the stormwater line. This green line over here is the sanitary sewer line. This light blue line is actually where some of the creek and drainage went. There is the unknown line that extends waterline that extends somewhere through the cemetery. I have been told where I'm drawing the red line, so coming back to the little building. So we will have to get confirmation from somebody in Public Works to actually denote that exact location, but it's coming from Kearney, is my understanding, this little building. And I believe I have heard that it has been turned off. We'll need to get confirmation on that as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ratliff. Any, Ms. Gilreath? And Mayor Pro Tem, I think you were the two that were most interested in the additional information about what else is in the cemetery. Does this answer your questions, and do you have any further questions as a consequence?
It does. I just was, you know, like I said, to be, to see if it was feasible to go ahead and do the entire thing instead of just, well, cost-effective than just one section, but being that it's only one pipe, as Mr. Thornton said, then we're good to go on my end.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Gilreath, any?
So can, can, can we have a vote on? Well, I would like for us to vote on us all going there, seeing it and agreeing and delaying this for a moment.
Commissioner Bridges has a comment, so let me, let's see if he's commenting related to that. Commissioner, you need to unmute yourself, please.
I will unmute myself, but I'm not gonna use that hand raise thing anymore because it's been up about 10 minutes, but.
I apologize.
Yeah, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just raise my own hand. Look, I am no engineer, and, you know, sometimes when Amy is talking, it almost sounds foreign. And, and, and this is what I would say about the money spent. I mean, I'm just as anxious and concerned about how we spend money relative to engineering costs. But I'm gonna tell you, if we upset or do any damage to one grave, that's one too many. And so I think that, you know, we really have to understand that sometimes we have to look to expertise. I don't think that my going over and seeing what it looks like is going to sway my feeling that we really need to do some assessment of what's there and what needs to be done. And, and, and again, I think that the engineers have to make those kind of decisions, and, you know, $24,000 is a lot of money, but i-if there's a lawsuit because some grave gets damaged, it could be a lot more than $24,000. So I think to not assess that area by experts is a mistake. Now, that's just my feeling about it.
If we hire this company and they do it, does that exclude us, the City of Oxford, from any liability? Any and all liability? No, I'm not asking Mr. Bridges.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, exactly. Yeah, Attorney Burnett?
Attorney Burnett?
Yes, ma'am. No, that's not gonna exclude us from liability just because we hired the expert. I mean, the, the repair work is what's gonna be key to it, and.
So who, who we hire to do the repair work, they would be, they'd have the lab, they would be responsible?
Well, if they were negligent in what they were doing, but, you know, you can't just send somebody out there to do work and they don't know what it is they're looking at to, to do the work. I mean, I'm assuming that Mr. Archer's company would have a detailed recommendation that anybody doing the work would be able to follow and make sure that the work was done properly because that's, you know, that would be the key to the whole thing. Knowing what it is they're gonna do, successfully completing it according to the plan.
Okay. Well, like I, when I said to begin with, it was probably a dumb question.
No, I don't, I don't think there are any dumb questions. You, you, you have to know that. There are no dumb questions because that means you're thinking about it, and, and, and it's important on behalf of everybody that we ask whatever we have a question about. And, and in light of what Commissioner Gilreath's suggestion and, and and Commissioner Bridges' comments, what I'm wondering is, and I'm gonna stop the video so I don't break up, is whether it's possible, if the board votes to approve this, and there is a desire for board members, it doesn't have to be all the board, would it be possible when the Freez and Nichols representatives come out to start to work, to set a time where board members could come and have a brief discussion at the site and hear the professional response to any questions? Would that be a reasonable compromise?
I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm sorry. Is there any way we could, someone could turn their volume down or mute or something because it's kind of hard to hear?
Now, that's, thank, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, because I was about to say the same thing.
I don't know who that came from, but yes, I heard it as well. I apologize. Do I need to repeat what I said?
If you would, please.
Okay, so I apologize. I was just asking that if we, you know, when we take the board vote, if the board approves to go ahead and award the contract to Freez and Nichols for this analysis, is it reasonable? Because certainly I can, you know, Commissioner Curran has asked some great questions. Commissioner Gilreath has asked some great questions. When Freez and Nichols comes out to the site, could we set a time where it would be appropriate for board members to come and look and ask any questions they have and hear the professional response and explanation? So at least it's not just being out there on our own, kind of milling about, anybody who wants to come could, could come and ask their questions at a predetermined time? Is that reasonable?
Mayor, from Freez and Nichols' perspective, we'd be more than happy to meet with the, with the board members out on site. We can schedule a date and time that's convenient for you all, and we'll be happy to do that.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Archer.
You're welcome.
It may be you that is causing the feedback for some reason. I'm not sure. No, I think that's it. Nope, somebody else is still causing feedback, and I apologize if it's me. Okay, so with that, are there any further comments or questions from any member? Technically, we've not yet, Commissioner Toby started us off with a round of questions before we actually did a motion. But since we're doing all the questions, does anybody else have any questions or comments at this time?
So are we gonna table it or are we gonna motion?
That's what I was gonna ask. What is the pleasure of the board?
Oh, okay, sorry.
No problem.
Motion.
Okay, we got a motion, I think, from Commissioner Kern. Let me, we've, I've spent so much time focusing on my screen. There we go. Motion to officially engage with Fries and Nichols Consulting Engineers to perform this feasibility study and to provide recommendations for, to the board for consideration. So we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if there is no, no further discussion, I will do the roll call, starting with Mayor Protem.
All right, but I still would like to, as a, as a comment, I still would like to go out there and see. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath?
No.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bridges. Unmute yourself.
I was gonna do it when you called my name. I.
No, no, okay.
You know, I leave myself muted until I get ready to say something.
That was not a criticism. I, if somebody doesn't remind me, I would forget.
It was a criticism, but you had just said my name and I was getting ready, unmute myself to vote. And that's the way I do it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kern?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Fields. And I think that's five, six, seven. Okay, that motion carries six to one, so it does pass. And what I would ask Mr. Thornton is that once you and Mr. Archer have determined a time when they will be coming out, then maybe you can throw out some dates, because I know, for example, Mayor Protem, who said he would like to come, you know, the timing with him, I, am I correct, Mayor Protem? You work, you're working out of town?
Yes, but that's okay.
Mayor Protem, right.
But, you know, I will try to be there, so that's fine, you know.
Okay, so maybe you could send to the manager, because of your schedule, you could send, whether it's better for you to come back at the end of the day or early in the day, but let the manager know some times which would work better. And then I, he, Mr. Archer, can send out some options to the board, and we can find out what would work best for board members who are interested in reviewing the site with Mr. Archer when they could do that. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Commissioner Gilreath as well, and Commissioner Kern and Tovey, and all the excellent questions and discussion. That's great. Moving on to the next item, item four G, consider approving a subrecipient agreement between the City of Oxford and area congregations and ministry ACIM as part of the 2020 coronavirus assistance CDBG project, up to 30,000. The subrecipient funds would be for ensuring that applicants have not or are not currently receiving duplicate benefits from the subrecipient or other agencies for the services provided by the grant. The subrecipient would then provide verification back to the grantee, which is the City of Oxford, of providing rental, mortgage, and utility payment assistance for those citizens of Oxford negatively impacted by the pandemic since March 30th, 2020. As part of the grant process, partnering with a nonprofit agency was highly encouraged to avoid duplication of services. ACIM already provides assistance to those seeking funds for rental and utility assistance, and their expertise is needed in this process, as indicated on the grant application. Grant consultant will coordinate with ACIM and be responsible for reporting, monitoring, and ensuring all state and federal requirements of the coronavirus CDBG project are met. Recommended action is that staff recommends approving the subrecipient agreement. And as we discussed last week, ACIM will double check their records with DSS to assure that there is no duplication of services. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
I saw Commissioner Fields and Tovey at the same time, and are there any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, then I will take, yes, Commissioner Gilreath?
I do have one question regarding the, the whole grant thing in a totality. In previous minutes from various meetings and very commissioners, we've been requesting information regarding how the money has been dispersed and follow-up reports on how the money actually being spent. Could we start receiving that, please?
I don't think any money has been dispersed. I think we're still in the process. That's the purpose for doing the subrecipient agreement. But Ms. Hart, if you, so that we can engage with ACIM and then people can do their application process and ACIM can research it. Am I correct, Ms. Hart, or am I misunderstanding?
No, and, and you're correct. We've not spent any funds. We haven't been released to have any funds spent yet. We're just trying to get all our paperwork in so that we are permitted to start providing assistance. But this is one of those steps that we have to take before we could go into further. So we have to go through this process, and then we have to have a virtual startup meeting with the state. And after that, hopefully, there will be a release of funds. And surely, you know, quarterly, we'll be more than happy to give a report, but as of right now, we've not spent a dime.
Does that, does that sufficiently answer your question, Commissioner?
It, it answers my question, but wow. Okay, I mean, I'm, I mean, I get the protocol, but if this is emergency relief for people, this is taking a long time to get into the hands of the people that supposedly need it the most. That's like, wow.
Well, the, the funds are, you know, we're providing them for up to six months. And, you know, they're doing the time period from last March 20, 20,000. So, you know, I know it's taking a long time, but certainly we can't start paying any bills until we get that release of fund notification from the state. So they're not gonna give us $900,000 and just let us start spending it without making sure that everything is in order.
Well, I understand the checks and balances of it, but it just seems like this is just incredibly ineffective in a sense. Are there any other things that we need to do then to, that we can do simultaneously to move them, move it so that the money can be placed where it needs to be placed and utilized the way that, that this wonderful amount of money was given for?
Yes, ma'am, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but you have to realize that this is the first of any kind that we've had this to happen, and, and we were so grateful and lucky to, to get the funds. And, you know, we're, we're doing things in order, and we're checking, making sure we have everything in order so we can get those release of funds. And I know it's taking a long time, but, you know, those are the things we have to do it, and we have to do it in order.
So, Ms. Hart, do you have a sense, after, you know, we approved this tonight, which hopefully we will, then you are going to schedule your virtual startup meeting with the state? Do you have any sense of what the timeline would be before we are able to start dispersing funds?
No, because we're at their mercy. They're working from home. And so, you know, we, we can't start that startup meeting until I represented to, and we've been assigned one, until we can fit into their schedule. So I, I don't have a sense, and I would like to, I would love to give you a targeted date, but I'm just afraid that if I gave you that date, it wouldn't be correct, because I have no idea.
Would it be reasonable, given the concerns that Commissioner Gilreath has voiced, would you be able to maybe let us know either directly or via the manager when you've been able to set that startup date so that we at least are, kind of have a sense of getting to the next step?
That's reasonable.
Great. Thank you very much. Any further questions from any members of the board? Okay, and I apologize. It looks like I keep freezing when I put my video on. I hate not being able to be seen, but that's the best way for my voice to come through. So with that, Mayor Protem, we have a motion on the table voiced concomitantly by Commissioners Field and Tovey. Mayor Protem, what say you? Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tovey?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilreath?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Where did Commissioner Bridges go? Hang on. Does anybody see Commissioner Bridges?
No.
Okay. Okay, if you can maybe text him and check and see, do you have his cell phone number, Ms. Bowen?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, if you can maybe just text him and tell him we're sorry he dropped off. And if he had any further questions, that make sure he voices them so we can get them answered. But with that, that motion does carry unanimously with those present, six to nothing. And hopefully, Commissioner Bridges can get back on. And so with that, we go to the consent agenda, which is to accept the March finance report by our Finance Director Hocken and approve the meeting minutes for the March 1st, March 9th, March 11th, and March 29th meetings. And what is the pleasure of, yes, yes, ma'am?
Commissioner Bridges is back.
Commissioner Bridges, how long ago did we lose you? I can't hear you.
I said I got a phone call and I had to take it.
Okay, that's okay. We just finished voting on item four G. Did, were, did you have any questions that you needed to ask? Okay, fine. Thank you. We're glad that you made it back. And we move forward to the consent agenda, and what is the plus? Okay, any discussion? And, Ms. Bowen, I would just ask if there's a chance we could get the minutes a little sooner than just a few days before the meeting, because I, maybe everybody else is much more efficient than I am, but I don't always have time to review them right before the, the meeting. So if there was a little more lead time, that might help in case there were any comments or corrections. Is that reasonable?
Endeavor to do that.
Thank you. And with that, all in favor of the consent agenda, Mayor Protem? Thank you. Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Tovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gilreath?
Ah.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That motion carries unanimously. And with that, we see a few dates to remember. The spring is here. Storybook Stroll has started yesterday. Three-on-three basketball tournament scheduled for Saturday, April 24th. The COVID Vaccine Clinic has taken place. Mr. Bridges, were you able to find a spot for your daughter?
Yes.
Oh, hooray.
All three of my daughters have gotten the first.
Oh, that's magnificent. That's, that's wonderful to hear. Thank you so much. And with that, we will move forward to comments from members of the board. And I want to do this before I forget. We have our new Public Works Director, Stephen Blasko, has been in the meeting. And I would, one, like to welcome you, Mr. Blasko, to our team. And Mr. Thornton, when did Mr. Blasko start?
Mr. Blasko joined Team Oxford on April the 6th. Excuse me, April the 5th.
Okay, well, welcome. We are so happy to have you here. Is there anything? I don't want to put you on the spot so you don't have to make a comment if you don't want to, but if there's anything you would like to say, you, you certainly may do so.
Well, I really appreciate you guys having me. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I really, really appreciate you guys having me. I feel very welcome in the town. Everyone's been extremely friendly, very professional, and I feel like I found a new home. So thank you very much.
Well, we're delighted to hear that. Are, are you going to be living in Oxford?
I currently live in Lusford. I'm eventually gonna make my way there, but, you know, I gotta pack up and find a house and everything. So it's gonna be a while, but eventually I will.
Okay, but it's a reasonable drive in the meantime, and I know that we all feel that if there's anything you, most likely you won't need anything from us, but if there is anything that you need, I hope you won't hesitate to ask.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
You bet. We hope this is gonna be a fulfilling experience for you with the City of Oxford, and look forward to meeting you in person. And with, with that, I will go forward. Mayor Protem, do you have any comments you would like to make?
I do. Thank you. First one, I would like to thank Ms. Cheek and the Recreation Department. I texted her earlier in the month when I received the news that the basketball goals at Rock Park had been painted. I really do appreciate that, and the guys, as well as girls out there, do appreciate that as well. And also thank Ms., excuse me, Mrs. Bowen and Ms. Blair for helping me tonight, because I had a little computer trouble when I first got on, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I'm sure we'll be glad when we don't need to do computer meetings anymore. With that, Mayor, Commissioner Bullock?
Just to pass on what I shared with you and the city manager, I was in the meeting last night and was informed by the county manager that starting next week, they will return to in-person meetings.
So are you asking what we can do with respect to that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I, you know, Mr. Manager, Mr. Thornton, do you have any comments that you want to make first? Or can we throw this out to the board for discussion?
How about we finish going down through the lineup of board members and comments and return to the subject?
Okay, we can do that. And it may be the manager who is causing the feedback. Um, Commissioner Bullock, I do want to ask, because in the past you have been in charge of litter sweep. And, um, I think I saw something about the county doing litter sweep. Have we had any thoughts about teaming up with them or anything?
When we've done that in the past, that has come from, the initial communication has come through the DOT. And they have not seen anything else. This was a volunteer group that has asked permission to do it. That's not the same.
Okay.
But anybody can participate.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Toby.
No, nothing.
Commissioner Gilreath.
Nothing. Good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Curran.
No, nothing.
Commissioner Bridges.
Yeah, um, I would, um, like, like to thank, um, Mr. Thornton for providing this, these departmental reports. But I will say that I was somewhat alarmed to see the number of resignations in the Police Department between March of 2020 and, uh, November of 2020. I mean, it, it appears that there were at least 14 or so police officers who resigned. And, and you know, I, I, in terms of investment, you know, I was just thinking the investment that the city puts in to training officers. And for us to lose them at that rate, um, you know, I just have a real concern for that. And, and I don't know what all the answers are, but I would certainly like us to do a little better job of keeping offices, um, instead of in a matter of, uh, I don't know, 10 months, nine, 10 months to lose 14 officers. And, and then, and as far as, I'm gonna go ahead and chime in about meeting, uh, you know, in person. Um, uh, I'm, I'm in no rush. Um, I, uh, I, I would say that if we decide to do that, I think that we still need to exercise precautions and that is distancing. And, and, and I would be wearing a mask. Um, now, uh, about June, July, I might feel a little better about.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Fields.
Commissioner Bridges took it. I was like he was reading my mind. I don't know Clara Vaughn's or what, but, um, he took it. And also I, um, would like to ask our manager and the long of our policing, um, if he could have Chief let us know if our police's, Police Department are going through any special training or added training due to the condition of the nation right now, the momentum of the nation in aspect to policing and men of color. Um, um, are they in attending any de-escalation program? Are we con- conducting any type of thoughts or input as to who answers a call? Um, if it is a mental health call, is a person, am I doing that big of a feedback?
No, I think that when the manager comes on, he creates feedback for some reason. It's not clear why.
But it, and I'm just really concerned, even though on one hand, Oxford's been very blessed that we have not gone through what other states and entities have gone through. It's not to say that it won't happen, but, um, I'd rather be proactive than pre. And as far as our policing and, and the knowledge of different entities that they have to, to be involved with, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's me- mental illness, which there's a lot of mental illness out there now. Um, and I'm just really concerned, um, about that. That's it.
And we do not have-
Mayor, if I can, I will. Mayor, I will respond to that. Um, to begin with, I think all of us have concerns about the number of departures from the Police Department. And, you know, uh, the reasons for such departures run the gamut. I will say that one of the departures that left for greener pastures has returned and found out that the pastures were not so greener on the other side of the fence and wanted to come back to Oxford. So, um, you know, there, there's a lot to that. I will also say that, uh, today, Chief Coley and I were having a conversation about, um, officer training and how to respond to these incidents, including, you know, this most recent incident of an officer unfortunately shooting someone when they thought they were tasing someone. Um, Chief Coley has actually been, uh, doing instruction in-house in regards to that as, as recently as this week, including, uh, helping officers with his years of experience with the Highway Patrol about, you know, how, how to properly approach, you know, people in vehicles. And, you know, so training continues on a continual basis. Um, it gets stepped up and, uh, directionally targeted when we have a situation like what has transpired here within the last few days, again in Minnesota, uh, about the taser and the shooting issue. Uh, we seek to utilize those instances that takes place to reinforce to our officers proper techniques, you know, how to do things and utilize those as lessons learned to hopefully do just that and avoid having a similar situation here. But we are constantly, um, training our officers on, on how to respond, how to de-escalate situations, how to read the situation when they get there to determine how best to engage, because you know as well as I do, uh, that nowadays the best approach is not to go up and, you know, and bust heads, as the old adage, uh, has come across that I'm sure those of you in my age group have heard many, many times. Um, you know, nowadays we very, very carefully try to assess the situation and determine the, uh, mental state of the individual or individuals involved and try to de-escalate any situation rather than having the police presence be an escalating factor in that incident, knowing that it is always better unless it is a, essentially a life or death type of situation, that the best, um, approach is to try to de-escalate, to step back a little bit and make sure that what we are going to do is going to be the correct approach rather than have a situation escalate beyond what it is already at. So, training, uh, continues on constantly. Uh, even in these COVID days when we can't send people to training like they had before, um, we are doing more and more of it in-house, uh, especially with some of the, the officers that we have that are a little bit younger and we feel need that extra reinforcement of training from the senior officers that we have that have that experience.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, I wonder, related to that, if it would be, I think it'll, you, you would probably, I would be interested in knowing of our new hires in the Police Department. You know, some come with experience, some come with none. And I think that is useful, um, to have a realistic sense of what we are dealing with as a department with respect to the level of experience among our officers and the level of training and investment and so on that might be needed for them. Is, is that, uh, possible to have, um, Melissa add that to the information that she provided on the new hires, uh, since last year? So that we can have a sense of, um, where we are experience-wise?
Well, I will say that if that is a request coming from the board, we will certainly do our best to honor it. Um, I think we understand here as staff, you know, what our challenge is that, uh, those that, you know, need the additional training due to their inexperience, get that additional training. Uh, they're currently matched up with FTOs, which are field training officers, who buddy with them for a period of time to help them gain that additional experience. We certainly just don't throw these folks out on the streets to the wolves and expect them to perform. Um, you know, they have an expectation of us as well. And that expectation of us is to provide them with as much training as they can properly get, as well as the proper equipment and backup and, and everything else that we can provide them to keep them safe in doing their job. And, uh, as long as I'm here, they're going to get that because, uh, it could be my son out there, uh, doing that job. And I would certainly want that individual, uh, just as much as I would want my son to feel that, you know, we've got his, we've got that person's back, be it he, she, whomever. And they're going to get the training that they need in Oxford in order for them to not only hopefully stay with Oxford and have a good feeling in regards to the choice that they made to come here, that, that they would stay and advance through our ranks. But, um, you know, if that's something that the board is desirous of, then we'll do what we can do.
Okay, I think you've explained it very well. Thank you very much. Um, and so with that, I think Commissioner Fields, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, that was all. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Thornton, then we have circled back around and gone through board comments. And, and so I leave it to you, uh, to continue the discussion about meeting.
Mayor. Just to clarify, not clarify, I just brought it up to let people know of the change because I learned it last night. And also, uh, thank you, it was Commissioner Bridges brought up the point. They do plan to maintain distance and use of masks.
Thank you. Very helpful. Um, so, Mr. Thornton, did you have future, uh, additional comments to make? Oh, you're muted, sir.
He's muted.
Hang on. Gotcha. How about that? Is that better? Sorry about that. It's getting late. It's been a long day. Um, I will say that right off the bat, that at this late hour, I will just simply say that to begin with, um, I think that, uh, I speak for not only myself, but my staff and, uh, saying that I think most of us would feel more comfortable with, uh, giving it at least another month before we attempt to gather back together. Um, I've been having some conversation with a number of my peers, uh, who get on the county, the city-county managers listserv and have discussions about, uh, this very topic, which is certainly a very pertinent one. And a number of them are like us that, um, they're talking about going back to, to holding live meetings. And the challenge is not so much the board gathering, it is the public. And meeting the, um, requirements, um, of the governor's continuing executive order in regards to the number that can gather in the space that you have available and meet those requirements. Um, that's really the difficulty as I see it. It's not so much of, of the board, you know, gathering and getting together and doing all those kind of things. But, you know, we do have to remember that we are conducting the business of the public. And the public, uh, is invited to attend the meetings. And that's where it gets a little tricky with trying to, um, make sure that everybody is properly distanced. Um, there was one on there today, I think it was, who was that? Hmm, trying to Garner, I think, maybe not Garner. Uh, another one of those G towns that was on there talking about how they had actually gone in and tried to apply the, um, governor's executive order to the space in their council meetings and, you know, determined how many people that it could accommodate from the public with the people that they had. And they would have to be asking staff to get up and leave and accommodate 14 members of the public and those types of things. So, um, you know, I know it's going to be a challenge whenever we go back to holding live meetings. I understand that, that that's going to be a continuing challenge until you have 90-some percent or better of, uh, folks being inoculated or vaccinated. That's going to be a continuing challenge. And I know that the board wants to get back together and do the business of the public. And I too, uh, believe that the, uh, in-person meetings are a little less cumbersome than, uh, these electronic meetings. And after 13 months, I'm tired of them too, believe me. Uh, when you average about two or three of these a day, you get real tired of them. But, um, I just personally, and speaking for staff, would believe that, um, May, we need to continue to meet via Zoom and, uh, reassess and potentially target June, uh, to get back together. Um, because the numbers of vaccinations of, of people are rising. I think the number that I saw today in North Carolina, at least having one, uh, vaccination for adults was approaching 40%. Um, so that is good. And that's where we need to be going with this, um, to make sure that we all do remain safe. I just, I, I, I understand it. I feel you. I really do. Uh, but I don't, the, the rush to get back to normal, uh, to catch us and bite us in the rear end. But, um, ultimately it is, it is the board's meeting and the board can determine where and how, uh, you wish to meet, as long as you do meet and you do post it and you meet all legal requirements. It, it is up to you. If you're asking me my advice and my recommendation, it is to, uh, continue to meet electronically, at least through May.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thornton. Uh, down here, I'm breaking up. Commissioner Bullock, uh, do you know whether the County Board made any kind of decision, um, with respect to the public? Or is it a different issue for them because they have, uh, a meeting space that is significantly larger than our boardroom so it can accommodate, um, staff and, and public spaced?
The only thing that was said was they obviously expect some public to come and they are making plans to deal with that and provide space. But as you said, they do have a larger facility.
Correct. Thank you. Um, members of the board, does anybody want to comment on Mr. Thornton's, uh, remarks and thoughts?
How, how will we enforce, you know, social distancing and masking? And, and if people choose not to?
You know, I, my knee jerk-
I would say the same way everybody else does.
Right. I, I think we would mark seats that are, would be allowed for people to occupy. And, you know, it's been such a long time since we've had an in-person meeting. I, you know, at, when we were having meetings before, we did have a police officer, uh, at the door. And I guess we could put a sign on the door to the boardroom and then have the police officer per given entry to anybody who refuses to wear a mask. Mr. Thornton, would that be what you imagine?
Uh, very much so, at a minimum. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In addition to when we post notice of the meetings on all of our formats, that, uh, the rules for participation and attendance would be a part of that in advance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other further comments or a desire to either, uh, follow the manager's recommendation or not?
I personally want to follow the manager's recommendation. I would like to see more citizens have the vaccine, at least one, so that we can be, it'll be a long time before we be comfortable, but so that we can be at least at ease about going back into our facility and be assured that we have taken all the precautions, that the public is very much aware of our standards, that we are following the state guideline as to wearing your mask, social distancing, and hand washing. So.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, and the only thing that I would say is, I will not deny, I look forward to the day when we can all be in the same room. It is exhausting and difficult to try to concentrate on you, and as Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Pro Tem pointed out, I have no idea when anybody is using the hand-raising function. I count on the little yellow box lighting up around your square to know that you want to speak. So I apologize for that. So it's exhausting. By the same token, I know that doing a meeting in person with a mask is also exhausting. So it's just hard, and I know we probably all feel similarly, so that's my perspective is, it's just tough regardless, and I'm sorry for that. I miss seeing you in person. Does anybody else have anything, or are we good with the manager's recommendations for the time being and thinking about, we'll proceed in May and then revisit?
I'm good with that, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do we adjourn or recess? We recess until? Okay. I'm with you there. Okay, we have a motion to recess until Thursday morning at 8:30. I have to do the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, please.
Okay, Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Commissioner Toby?
Yes.
That is unanimous. We'll see you Thursday morning at 8:30. Godspeed, be safe and sound.
Good night.